Siya Diayo Ajimanbedu Listen to him, listen to the king.
His name is Sajifo Asiyadiyo Ajimanbedu II says it is not prudent for the Bank of Ghana to undertake the project. He argues that the justification simply does not add up.
Yeti yaba Bank of Ghana bo siyana yekoba na ayamefono o che muto miyenua Bank of Ghana kuanano odemo tujute million Odemba koo okosi dani Ey! Abenini Me kesebe yebiyasindi Niyebanpane bayo Me kia manklasiye Mama n'opreni Yedja se yedja se onye
Bank of Ghana says it is using $250 million to build a new head office. What is this? Because they are autonomous, they just choose to do anything they like. How can Bank of Ghana alone decide to undertake such a project?
He wants the president to intervene in the matter and conduct some investigations.
Yebasre manpengini Bank of Ghana onye independentu sa Onfrabe Non debantina mukon Naba napkabi bipapa bi Anjore
We are appealing to the president to meet Bank of Ghana authorities as a matter of priority and undertake an investigation into the funding of the project.
Already, the minority in parliament has given the Bank of Ghana seven days to provide information on the cost of the new building. This is despite the bank's explanation that its current head office building, which was built by the Nkrumah government, has failed a structural integrity assessment.
N'opreni agi owe diyaminim Makar Sabampe wansama kan Eni dami damo bibi klanabadi bukuwaga mban kuwep N'ebahuze yenyabre
Nana, take your time. We want to break the Bank of Ghana building. And that's all these things, you have to take your time, we beg you. Yes, yes, we know sometimes it's annoying, but we beg you, nana, please. Don't go and break it down, we beg you, nana. We beg you, we beg you, pa, nana. Here's the electoral commissioner, Jean Adukwemensa. Telling us about one or two things, listen.
How can we continue to rely on the guarantor system to identify a citizen? Sorry, how can we continue to rely on the guarantor system to identify who a citizen is when parliament has by itself passed a legislative instrument which states that for the purpose of identification of a citizen of Ghana, the Ghana card will be the sole document to be relied upon? And here, permit me to quote Regulation 7.1 of L I 2111, which states that a national identity card issued to an individual shall be used for a number of transactions where identification is required. One of the mandatory transactions stated in Regulation 7.1 is the registration of voters. It is therefore unfortunate that after making and passing a law that established the Ghana card as a sole means of identification of a citizen, we are by ourselves undermining the very law that we have made. As a commission, we find it unfortunate that our efforts to strengthen the credibility and integrity of our voters' register and by extension, our elections by the introduction of the draft C I did not receive the support of parliament. Members of parliament were of the view that the N I A should fully operationalize this mandate before the C I could be considered. Sadly, as we all know, the N I A has not fully commenced its operations nationwide due to a lack of resources. That leaves us with no option than to rely on the current C I with its inherent challenges to conduct a voters' registration exercise until such time as the N I A would become fully operational.
So that is the electoral commissioner, Jean Adukwemensa. Tomorrow is Omawo. Obashonu wokbe nuwokpoto Ngobaya adibankpoto. But the question I ask is that, how did the Ghana card come to be? Because the Ghana card used the guarantor system, do you remember? You don't remember? Who were registering for the Ghana card? You remember? They used the guarantor system. Because at the time, your birth certificate was really not as important as you may want to think that it is, your birth certificate. So I had to, in fact, before the 2020 general elections, I had to guarantee some of my aunties, right? My aunties who lived and actually saw me being given birth to, including my mother. I had to now go and say, oh, I know these people, they are Ghanaians. And then based on the fact that you had the voter ID card, you could now go to say, oh, you are Ghanaian and that you were, then they gave you the Ghana card. So what exactly is the electoral commissioner talking about, that the guarantor system failed? I thought that in 2020, when she was busy trying to register people, there was mentioned to us that the way you are going, take your time, slow down, pipe down, madam. Because your predecessor came, changed logo and says, we saw it, we liked it, we enjoyed it, we chose it and you can't do anything about it. And the Domahini asks a very important question. We have given you independence, but your independence is unto us and it is to us and it is for us and it must be with us. But eh, bigana we dey. We activate the phone lines now. Afio, afia, afia, anebani nowo, panyo abani nowo Ofi momo woyegbonu woyegbuena Kwa ajinu wokbanfarba shue wohie, alotidinkwa kafu wote Traktu wono akahimi Ya wojibua wojinuka woyenua kowenua wokodiya noa jowo Wana shika woshulele Ekomefemo nikano ya baba Abele komaba kumo woshidene ba kumo w Ni woshulele ni woyi obonke jomo Ni kaka mama papa ni ebu ekoko Afini badé Iyo iyo aké Kamengme amehia ena abakolo ameshikodje tomochipsi yala shishi Aké sakisi efo monona folona ajak Shika amebakbele amehengme Wana fini hia gantetike tetefen Oyafi Tra anu mandiwa kablao, good morning. And tomorrow, make sure you are eating some kuku. Good morning. Hello, good morning.
Hello, good morning brother.
Yes, sir, pastor, welcome to our town hall meeting, what is on your mind?
Oh, this morning a lot, but let me wish the people of Ghana all the best in there, Omawo celebration.
Thank you, sir.
If I understood, your friend told me something, he said that nature is true. Is there any time around this time round, at least the rains will gather?
It is very true, it will gather.
And it's always have to fall in but let's respect our culture entirely. They are all part of us.
You know, it is only in Africa that we look for God outside our culture. The Arabs The Arabs are Muslims. The Asians are Hindus, Buddhists and all of that, right? Europeans are Christians. Africans, we have left ours, we are chasing everybody.
That is why even our economy is at mess, may God have mentioned that. In fact, Madame Jean Mensah may, if her stand by is full of in fact, you have contradicted yourself severally. As you said, you, you know your aunties were before you, you have to go to guarantee for them. Look at what we are saying and now here we are. And even at a point in time, she even admitted that the N I A are not fully register everybody because of challenges that they also face.
And that is a fact that we knew, we knew this fact.
Precisely, we told them, oh, I would do it, I would do it. If you don't think outside the box, your politicians who appoint you might manipulate you and at the end of the day, you will be fine wanting, so she should just apologize and
Thank you.
Let's take the system slowly, have a pleasant
You too, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, sir, boss, how are you, sir?
Oh, afio, afio.
Afio, yao, 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 yao.
Oh, Dominique, in fact, I'm surprised that for some time now, anytime you play the voice of kings, I would not call them kings, they are kings. You know, and they speak. I mean, you could hear some sense of wisdom and knowledge in what they say, just like the Domahini who just spoke. The other time, you played a voice clip of a king who spoke
Yes, Nana Kabanketia the fourth.
Yes. I mean, just to think of it, it actually has, most of our kings thinks wisdom, even than excuse me to say government leaders. It seems like most of our kings have a good planning for their people in the town, more than government leaders. Because frankly, frankly, government don't plan. Government system don't plan. They have it on paper, but they don't know how to implement it. It is a spell because everything you could see that has happened since after the president, Nkrumah's time to this time, every plan has failed. And we keep on jabbing with these sorts of rhetorics and all those things. And people are still suffering and we are happy in later time. Barbara, medji medji.
Thank you.
But
Omun to abane momo.
Johnny, please, my regards to Helen and tell Helen that yesterday morning, a gift jockey music man stepping out. You repeat that for me another time.
I hear you, thank you very much.
Happy weekend to you all.
Thank you, sir, grateful, great. Good morning.
Johnny, Ajana one.
Ajana two.
Johnny, this morning I cannot stop, I cannot stop laughing.
Welcome to our town hall meeting, why can't you stop laughing?
Johnny, Ekowas should be rebranded and its name should now be a goistic cartel of wasteful fico fans. And then we should stop paying Ekowas levy because it's been used to fund wasteful agenda. You understand? Johnny, there's situation in Mali and in Niger and the solidarity stands by Burkina, Mali and Guinea. Provided perfect opportunity for West Africa or African countries to dismantle new colonialism completely. But unfortunately, our leaders have forgotten that there are people that they are leading and the people are clamoring for something. Johnny, if people are jubilating, hailing the devil, what does it tell you if we Jesus have failed in contest? I listened to my very good friend Dominic Nityu asking the security chiefs to hold allegiance to the regime, the presidency, to hold allegiance to them. Now do you know why even the president derived his powers from we, the ordinary people?
That's right.
Johnny, you see, last week
Quickly.
when you led the security generalist in Nigeria, he told you that when the delegation was headed to Niger, they took the earlier of Sokoto that should tell you the moral society, the religious authorities, they have right to participate in shaping up national destiny. And that is why I am calling on the moral society of Ghana, the clergy, traditional authorities to hold authorities through to power.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Because of lack of masculine basic three, all that are in the streets, the people are fleeing the city for the problem.
Thank you very much.
That is what we are getting to.
Grateful. Good morning. Yes, sir, boss, how are you, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm greater than a kra. You may want to reduce the volume on your radio set for me, please. And you can also call me on 055 924 2717 055 924 2717 and 055 691 0154 055 691 0154 Wait, this is our town hall meeting, bro, good morning, talk to me.
Okay, Jerry, this morning, you know, when you played the standby of Dr. Mahmoud Babi, I was just laughing.
Oh, why?
I was like, hey, oh, seriously? Because the vice president is like, I just admire his bravado in, you know, trying to, you know, hoodwink all Ghanaians to think that he's the smartest person on earth because he comes and then dash out anything, any slogan and then he'll be just going about with this, like 20, 23 and now he's back to while the experts in the field are telling us that this is not the right information that he's giving out. You know, I always feel that the way he always come out and then coming throughout anything with that kind of vein, I wish, you know, he channeled that bravado into his main field, which is the economic, you know, wizard that he touted before coming to help us salvage ourselves from this, you know, Bank of Ghana, everything that has made everything up. He doesn't go about, you know, doing, laughing at us because that's how I see him doing everything.
Thank you very much, grateful, grateful, thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, Johnny.
Yes, sir, Clifford, how are you?
Yeah, I'm cool, how are you?
I'm preparing to go and celebrate Omawo.
Yeah, 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 that is how life should be.
Right, right.
Johnny, good morning to your colleagues in this TV.
Morning.
Johnny, you talked about one district, one factory. But I just want to say, like, Borogo Forests, we have a meat factory and tomatoes factory at Polygo. And all of them are not working. And the one painful thing is that, you know, via dump, I believe you heard about it. You know, via dump is an irrigation dump that we use to farm on it. My father farm on that land, schooled all of us. And now, Akufodo came to power, he went and closed all the ghatters. Somebody who is talking about farming and one district, one factory and one dump, all the ghatters, as of now, I am telling you, no one can go there to do farming again. Claiming that they are doing construction and nothing. They fill the ghatters with sun and water cannot pass through it. So what kind of person is this? You talk one thing and you come and do one thing. Johnny, if I tell you the kind of suffering people are suffering in Borogo, you know, Apapi Forests, no jobs. The petty, petty farming that they live on. And now you come to close these ghatters, so where are they going to? So these kind of things, whenever you talked about this kind of things, I get angry more, so I don't want to even comment. Good morning.
Morning, thank you, and good morning to you.
Hello, good morning.
Yes, senior citizen, how are you?
I'm funny.
Great, great.
Thank you very much, my young son brother. I perfectly agree with you that the campaign message, both 2016 and 2020, was not, you know, a policy of invigorating, revamping and resuscitating factories that are verge of, you know, collapsing. The message was, you know, establishing a complete new factory for each and every district that we have in Ghana. But there is nothing equally wrong when we actually turn over the policy to revamp, resuscitate and then invigorate factories that are on the verge of collapsing. I think it's also a good thing. But my brother, this morning, the gentleman that you spoke with demonstrating the view that some of us in the new petrotic party hold that one of the fundamental, desultanic and prodigious problems that the devil this administration is the president not appointing people based on meritocracy that rather based on family and friends. He doesn't even know the difference between metasporta and then importa. He doesn't know, and I perfectly agree with the second person that you spoke with. And then lastly, my brother, there is nowhere in the world or any part of the world that you go and sell gold and they will give you kebab or klikotangshi or kilewili. What they will give to you is dollar. And when you go and sell gold, you don't even know the quantity that you sell. If you send there, you don't even know those involved. And then they give you dollar and you use the dollar to buy food. What is creativity and innovation in that? How can they even come out and say that this is a very creative idea? That is why Dr. Baumea wanted us to vote for him to become the president of the Republic of Ghana. And lastly, my brother, it does not make sense for Bank of Ghana to see to them lying on their stomach in the classroom, seeing people drinking, you know, unportable water, water that contains kuli fumsen, you know, commensa. Seeing, you know, come to station and see the nature of the road that drivers drive on. See all these micro and, you know, microeconomic problems and they think that could lose a amount of money to build that particular building. I perfectly agree with that. That is why I said that let us do, you know, nationwide demonstrations against this particular administration. I am M P, foundation member of M P, but I'm not happy with that where they are mismanaging the economy. The earlier we take, you know, action, the better for us, especially you, the youth, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Johnny, Johnny.
Yes, boss.
Johnny, te te.
Yo, Jukba, hey, welcome to our town hall meeting, talk to me.
Bole, nila asafa chene.
Eh, la ma mi, denje, denje.
Eh, la ma mi. Johnny, eh, very quick one. Eh, I just want to find out, yesterday, the meeting with the quas, blah, blah, like, what was the outcome?
Well, so the outcome is that they are now looking for pledges and then what every country will, what do you call it, will provide or support their action with. But as for the action, they say it will happen.
The action of them sending the troops over there.
Truth in Niger will happen, yes, sir.
Oh, okay, okay. Before they send our Ghana people, they should a man in Ghana, he said, eh, one, maybe, ah, okuna, mea. I mean, they should sell their car for me so that they can go. Oh, Johnny, no, 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 pardon me for
Thank you, thank you very much indeed. Good morning.
Good morning, Johnny.
Yes, sir, boss.
Yeah, my name is Daniel.
Daniel, talk to me.
Yeah, so, eh, my greetings to honorable Ahiafo, M P for Akachi South.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, you know, you talk about one district, one factory. And you know, Akachi South is one of a fertile land that produce vegetables and other cash crops. They can explore that area to establish at least tomato factory or pepper grinding something like that in the area.
So in Akachi South, in Akachi South, what I have here, the government intended that we're going to have a blackberry syrup factory that was going to employ 110 people. But has that happened?
It doesn't happen. There is nothing, even there is no procurement of land that would establish that. There's nothing like that in the Akachi South area. But when you look at Akachi market, the produce that comes from Akachi market can feed a section of Ghanaians, you know. So that is that for the one district, one factory.
Thank you.
About the Niger issue.
Yes.
You know that, have you heard about Russia sending their troops to South Africa? They are waiting for this troop. They sent a nuclear bomb, a plane, nuclear jet to South Africa, waiting for them. So this, our military, our men, they should, they should withdraw from this action.
I hear you.
Let's please review because
I hear you.
in the dialogue with the people, the people will listen, they are not animal. They will listen to them.
Thank you.
They should dialogue with them.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Salaam alaykum.
Wa alaikum salaam abarakatuh kusami, how are you?
Oh, I'm good.
Yes, sir, talk to me. Yeah, afi, yao, 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 yao.
Thank you very much. I think I will live with the president and his wife in the same district. There's no plant, there's no plant for any factory in our district here. I will leave with them, with the president and his wife. The first gentleman, the second gentleman, you know, once. You see, I have my worry, Johnny, is about our governance system allowing this then to happen in past. Because planning starts from the bottom. But how are we planning from the bottom? If you look at the work of the R C C, I mean Regional Coordination Council, it's true, it is that planning at a district level is compatible with, I mean, with the national planning system. But how are we planning from the bottom? I think we have to do, look at these issues, how we plan in this country and we will be able to fish out in terms of fighting corruption. I think it should also start from the bottom. If you start from the bottom, people will not get their way at the top there. But it's happening at the bottom because of the system is not working. Let's look, people talk about the M C Es. Let's look at the act, the constitutional article, article 243 and then look at how we commend it. Why is it that, Johnny? We are appointed by the president and we need the approver. We need the approver of two tests of the assembly members present. But if we want to remove you, we need the two tests of all assembly members, whether you are present or not present. You have to be present, all the assembly members have to be present.
Okay.
But in approving, we have, we have to deal with those assemblies. I think we have to look at that act so that if come to remove her, we use the same number that are present to be able to remove that person.
All right, thank you very much.
So that, I mean, this, the noise about M C Es, M C Es, we come the chin of the past.
Thank you very much, sir, grateful. Good morning.
Hello, good morning, sir.
Yes, sir, boss, how are you, sir?
This is Rasid, he's from Duma.
Okay, talk to me, sir. Welcome to our town hall meeting.
Eh, the one district, one factory.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm from, my mother is from Nalibu, it's Mapushe district. And my dad is from Bungurugu Yoyo district.
Okay.
And I have artists in West Mapushe, that live. Those three districts, I don't think I've seen any one single factory that is okay. It's like, imagine, Bungurugu Yoyo district, you imagine something like
That's right, that's right, earlier in the morning.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
There's nothing like any factory, even the most
So in Bungurugu, in Bungurugu Yoyo, the government said they were going to have a share processing factory to employ 750, share butter, share processing factory.
And have they established it? Because I have not seen anything like that.
Uh, you tell me, you come from there, what have you seen?
There is nothing like that, Johnny, even the road linked to Bungurugu because of the way that started in East Mapushe, the road linked to Bungurugu is no more trouble. You can tell your team and their ones, that their road is no more trouble within this day. Why today they say that, this government is very similar to the man, because they are few. But well, and it's going for the well.
Okay.
There is nothing in this world that you can't say that it has come to pass.
Thank you, I'm grateful, thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, my brother.
Yes, sir, Papa, Otu den.
Boko, omi, otu den, out there.
Ah, yamela dum, yamela dum.
And afi, afi.
Eh, oh, you are dum, yao, 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 yao.
Johnny, Johnny, just that, the country is outside the
Oh, take your time.
The country is outside the, my brother. People who said that the money is there, I worked at Bank of Ghana before, I mean, the vice president. So you come now to power and depleted all the money, a Bank of Ghana. It's still, we are still bragging that you are the best strategy, is that not it? Apart from that, it talks about digitalization. If Domahama had not started or, you know, brought about this fiber optic around the country, we would be bragging about that. So those who brought this fiber optic, you think they don't have means of doing the digitalizing? You should stop bragging, apart from that, Jean Adukwemensa.
Quickly.
It should slow down, it should just slow down. I don't think that he has the means to read the election for M P become 2024 election. We will not allow it, the youth are angry. Let me allow others to come here, my brother.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, boss.
Only called to say God bless you.
Bless you too. What's your name and location, please?
Ibrahim Nixah.
Okay, thank you.
The day I heard Ken, Ken, a Japanese said, he doesn't know you and I said, thank God, we are achieving what you are doing is working. He said he doesn't know you and I said, no, that shouldn't intimidate you at all, Johnny.
Oh, I'm not intimidated, come on.
We are achieving, uye yediya, uye, you are for the youth, we are happy. Kasi dreves, mu yemu, ye niyaji, niyaji, so onimu, it's part of intimidation, ubi. Ni pa okosi na tivi suba udi, ene wasi onimu, ah, emi, emi de saye, poli sin na si, baby. Johnny is winning the game. It's part of that is, ya denye, ya inti wasi onimu, onimu ya fa ya niyumu, ya niyumu, ene, ye di ukuwa ye president, ene, uye yebe tusu cheni. So we are happy, Johnny, God bless you.
Thank you very much, God bless you too. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, how are you? I've missed you.
The only man greater than greater, Akah. I hope you are doing well.
I am fine, truth, how are you?
And Ellen and William too.
William, yeah, they are all fine.
Very good. Johnny, so my hometown is Empoho. I want to know the factory they wanted to build because the last time I went there, it's a mine area and everything is totally off.
M N O P, Empoho, Empoho Chalk Factory, 110 people to be employed in Empoho.
We are still waiting. We are still waiting, they have a year and a half. Johnny, I want to touch on, you said today's town hall meeting.
Yes, free your mind, yes, yes.
My first issue is B O G. Johnny, which private institute would hire a C E O and at the end of a financial year, you incur 60 billion C D S losses and you still be at post? And to make matters worse, you are spending $200 million when children are still lying, sitting on the floor to learn. Where does this happen? When we were here, Ghana Telecom was incurring losses month on month, year on year. Vodafone took, they have ever incurred losses. But the funny thing is, it's the same people that were managing Ghana Telecom, that was managing Vodafone. So what is wrong with us as a people?
Managerial experience, directorial experience, work experience.
It's everything is, and a man said that we should go to the grassroots. Look, Johnny, I was listening to P L O Lumumba and he said that he doesn't have any hope for the next 50 years of Africa, of Africa. Because the youth Because the youth that are coming, we are learning from the old men that are corrupt. We were happy when the Nana Bees and the Samir Okus were coming into the picture. But today, look at them. Where is, uh, uh, uponkoma?
Hmm.
You are here talking about tourism. When there are issues and you see, it's because we are so gullible, they come back to us and we still cheer them on. If Bahamia today can come and tell me to vote for him, when I had given him the mandate and he couldn't do anything for me for six and a half years. Johnny, taxes, the last time, yesterday you made a statement that it's not as if we are afraid or we don't want to pay taxes.
Yeah.
I have friends in abroad.
Mm hmm.
They said that if they will have to take fifty percent of their salary and pay taxes, they are okay because they see the taxes working. Johnny, if I wake up and I don't have to spend two hours in traffic to get to my office, if I wake up and my tap is flowing, I have uninterrupted electricity, do you think we would fight against taxes? No, we need taxes to build Ghana. But we want to see what the ones we are already paying are being used for. Not the one percent enjoying it.
Hmm, that's true.
So you guys, thank you for the good work we are doing.
Thank you very much.
And I feel, I feel. Enjoy your home.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, our boss.
My name is Charles, coming from.
Okay, Charles, talk to me. Bold and strong, Charles.
Our leaders are doing, especially this M P people. Why can't they, if you are president, tell the people who are coming to, if you are doing, if you are doing business with somebody, the thing is for you, say fifty fifty. If you don't like, go. You find a certain person, this go, this oil thing that they are doing.
Gold for oil.
The oil belongs to you.
Hmm.
Just tell the person, oh, fifty fifty, oh, fifty forty, if you don't like, go. Now we are getting eighty percent. What can eighty percent do for us? Just imagine, eighty percent, the thing belongs to you. You are doing business with the person. Fifty fifty, oh, fifty forty, you don't like, go. Then go and negotiate with different person. Now look at how we are suffering. We can't even buy petrol to work. We are in this. You bring petrol to work. Now look at the price of petrol and diesel. We are suffering. We are really suffering if they don't take time. Twenty twenty four, what will happen?
Uh, don't worry. It will be a democratic process. Thank you very much, Charles. Grateful. Good morning.
Uh, good morning, Johnny.
Yes, our boss.
Uh, this is Kuku Common Sense from Nguava. At the moment, I'm walking by the roadside.
Okay, Kuku. Kuku, do you have a factory in your district?
Uh, 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 well, half a factory, I don't think we will get some.
Oh, don't, don't, don't be like that. At least be hopeful.
Johnny.
Hmm.
My common sense is telling me I will not get factory in my district. Because tremendous sugar factory was built.
Mm hmm.
And the chiefs and people went to the jubilee house and the president assured them that it will be operational. When chiefs and people went to the black house and me, a common, uh, citizen, and I have a factory in my district. This is what my common sense is telling me.
Okay.
Apart from the chiefs, are they not ashamed that the president has lied to them and they cannot do anything about it? Johnny.
Okay.
Johnny, are you there?
I'm here. Oh, I'm shocked. So go, go ahead. Make your point, please.
So, so you see where my common sense is telling me I cannot get a, a, a factory in my district?
Okay, all right.
If the chiefs and people who walk the presidency and ask, and the president you assured them and you are allowing this factory to rot, God will punish our leaders. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. And that will be my final caller for today. Uh, the Gamanchi Ni, uh, Taki, uh, the second, Mm hmm, Kuku threw the second, Gamanchi, Mm hmm, Abia Suma. I prayed for Homowa. Listen to him. And that was a prayer by Ni Taki Te Koutou. Ni Jeñio, Gamanchi, Abia Suma. And the thing you hear is not yao, is hiao. H I A O, hiao. So, so that ahin ahahwo, hiao. It's not yao, hiao. Mm cha, ni oma ne abla wo. Hack so that good tidings may, may engulf us. Cha, ni oma ne abla wo. And then you say hiao, ahin ahahwo, so that it may be well with us. So it's not yao. There's no yao in there, we beg you. You understand? There's always somebody who is louder than the chief and the king. Trust my people. Well, man, many of you are here, eh? Black mass, I would say. Madafi, Uafi. It's been seven years of perfection. Happy birthday to Maud. You are our joy. You are perfect in every way. We love you. This is from your mommy and your daddy, uh, as well Benedicta is your mommy. And happy birthday also to Reverend Mrs. Rebecca, eh, Jaco Afari. God bless you so much for your love and kindness towards all of us. Uh, from Faith Word, I love you dearly. This is from Bobo Ne. If it's your birthday, I swear, happy birthday to you. And speaking of Reverend Dr. Mrs. As of mommy in the studio, software D and E special, mm hmm, Grace Hamoa. Uh, is it Prempa Ajimai, Ajimai, yes. Grace Hamoa Ajimai. Oh, man. Softoo, Softoo will give you two show, two directs. Softoo, Softoo.